The House of Representatives meeting in the Village Board order. Roll call.
Trustee Francois.
Here.
Trustee Sorensen.
Here.
Trustee Bush.
Here.
Trustee Thuzius.
Here.
Trustee Pam Kowski.
Pam Kowski.
Here. Sorry. Trustee Stantz.
Here.
President Ingram.
Here. Stand for pledge allegiance.
The minions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the comments, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the Village Board of any issue not on your agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. But the Village Board of curious input from residents may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly on the agenda. Do you have anything? Consent agenda, upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration in general business. We have a motion on the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion approved.
Second. Between us somehow or other.
We have a motion and second discussion. There are no discussions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Before the village officer, village president, I just like to thank the staff for all the work they've done in the last couple of weeks with the snow and the rain and all the trouble. They actually got compliments at the bus bar lines, so. Lot of hours put in, so I want to thank you both, especially with everything we've got going on. That's why I have been this evening. Do you want to administer it?
I should probably put it in there, right? But just on our side, obviously, tonight will be a closed session to talk about the administrator position a little bit further. If you come down to the final six or final four after tonight, the closed session packets are in front of you for you to look at if you have a chance, once you get into a closed session, so. That's all I have.
Mr. Lane's trustee report.
I would just like, oh, thank you. I just wanted to mention that I'd like to take a look at enforcement of some various village ordinances that different residents have expressed concern that they feel that sometimes the ordinances aren't enforced. So I don't know if that's something we want to talk about on a future, on a future date, or what the responsibility is for enforcement.
Can we bring it up? Want to bring it up at a meeting?
Do you want to run the staff, make a staff, start out with staff meeting?
Yep.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to, I was thinking about when I was again reminded from the minutes about the meeting that came up at the library recently that was reported in the newspaper about flooding and just handling climate change and things, and I'm thinking perhaps, I don't know what we can do, but I think there should be some effort made to make sure that the village is prepared to deal with climate change events like a thousand year flood or hundred year floods that come every 10 years, so I don't know exactly how we do that, but it shouldn't, something we should be thinking about in the near future to kind of fall in line with what was mentioned in that particular meeting. I know they're having another one, but something we should be looking into.
Any other trustee? There are nothing, we move on to general business. Discussion action regarding resolution poll 1, 2019 to provide for sale of approximately 1,625,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2019A.
Hi. I'm Dave Ferris from Ellers. First of all, I'd like to thank you for letting Ellers be of service to the village, and I'm happy to be here to present the pre-sale report for you tonight. On the document you received in your agenda was the pre-sale report for the 1.625 million general obligation promissory notes, series 2019A. If you turn to page one, the purposes of the, of this issue are to do street improvements, park improvements, replace and purchase equipment, stormwater improvements, sewer improvements, and water improvements. If you turn to page five, I'll let you catch up here a second. This is the listing.
I think it's struggling to load. You got it, Dave?
Do you have it in front of you?
Yeah.
Do you want me to keep going, or are you?
What, what page would that be within the packet?
Forty-six.
Okay. I'm scrolling, I'm not going to get there very soon.
Let me know when you're ready.
I know. I'm going to go this way.
Can you see it? Yes. Keep going.
Okay. So on page five is the listing of all the projects that you have in your capital financing plan for this year. The first 12 are funded by the tax levy. The 13th item is for the third, or is for the third well, which is funded by water user fees. And the last two is to replace equipment and make modification of the wastewater treatment plant, which are funded through the sewer user fees. Okay, so on the next page, page, I don't remember what it is for you, but page six on our number, this is the sizing plan for the projects, so the total amount of the projects that were on the previous page, on the top there is the 1.571 million. On top of that, you add the fees that it takes to issue the, the notes, and the total sizing of the issue that we're going to go to market with is 1,625,000.
Can I ask you just one?
Sure.
It might be a silly question, but item number four is equipment replacement, and item number 14 is replace equipment. Is that separated just because it's funded from different sources?
Yes, yes, yes. So, but as I said, the first 12 items are ones that you will actually levy taxes to pay for, and the last three are actually paid by user fees of utilities.
So the 87.5 one?
Yep.
Have the, so the number 14 is the water sewer portion, and then the other half of that is up in the 167, so it was something, I don't remember exactly what it was, we budgeted, it would be half on the levy and half water sewer.
This is stuff that's all in the plan anyway.
I have another question now.
Sure.
All of this debt is going on general obligation though, right? There isn't?
That's correct.
Any clean water, safe water, even though specifically going for well engineering? You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Like, like above through the DNR?
Right, and I think probably what the case is, if the dollar amount isn't enough that it warranted to go through the clean water fund, and when Greg sized this for you, Greg Johnson is the lead on the job, general obligation was the best fit for this.
Jerry.
Typically, when well, in the case of the well, when it's actually constructive, then we will do whatever clean water funding.
Because that'd be like a 1.5, you would want it to be in the DNR.
Right, and typically, they allow you to go back and put the planning funds in it.
Right.
But that way, you only have to do the paperwork for the grant and all that stuff once, that's the way the DNR prefers it be done.
Yeah, right, so that's great, thank you. Okay, so turning to page seven, this is the repayment schedule based on the funding sources. So the first part of the schedule is the amount that will actually be paid by the tax levy over the next 10 years, and then the sewer utilities portion, which will be paid by sewer utility user fees, and the water utility share is the third section there, which makes up the total amount of this, of this issue. Then on our page eight, this is the impact analysis that we do to kind of show you what happens to the levy when you, when you add on the new issue. The first part of this is the existing general obligation debt, so on the left is your total debt payments. There are some fees that are associated with payment debts, that is the continuing disclosure fees, paying agent fees and whatnot. From that, there are sources that can be used to pay for this that are not taxes, and those are monies from your park fund, the sewer user fees, the water user fees, and then your TID number three tax increment. That leaves you with a net tax levy, which is what you put on your tax rolls in 19 and going forward, and the amount that's in the equalized value is the amount that's a TID out, that's what you use to calculate the mill rates, and we've assumed a 1% growth rate, I think, going forward on most of this debt, so those, those numbers that you're taking to get the tax rate is that net levy divided by that equalized value with some conservative growth built in, which gives you the, the tax rate projection on that existing debt. Then we add in the issue that you're about to consider. There are some other fees that are being used to pay this debt, that you can see the sewer and water, and that gets you down to the new debt service levy amount. You divide that by that equalized value that we showed in the columns over to the left, and that gives you the new tax rate. As you can tell by the way that we structured this, there won't be really much of an impact from the 19 budget to the 20 budget for debt service, and we try to structure this so that there's some flexibility going forward, so you can see how the debt rate is going down, and what we like to do for you is so that you're able to take on new projects in the future without having your levy bouncing up and down, is we try to feather that in so that your tax rate stays stable and your taxpayers don't see big bounces in your tax rate. Any questions on that schedule? The last schedule in this packet is the debt capacity schedule. The way this one is set up is you actually, you're able to borrow up to 5% of your TID in equalized value, so that first column is your equalized value TID in, which is your total value of the village, times the 5%, is that debt limit number that you see there. Compared to the existing principal outstanding, you can see what your debt limit is at the end of 18, which is 56%, you can tell that that's nicely falling and giving you flexibility on the debt limit. Then when we add in the new issue, you can see what the combined existing plus proposed is, and you know, there's a little bit of an increase because of what we're doing in this proposed issue, but then once again, it starts to fall, fall back down and giving you flexibility to be able to issue if you have projects in the future that you want to borrow for. Any questions on that? Then I'll take you back to.
I guess I should say, is that kind of the ideal, I mean, is that pretty much the ideal way of doing something like that?
Yes.
It looks good here, I mean, is there, you know, I'm just wondering, is there something that would be different that would, I don't know, I don't know, I mean, it all looks good, but I'm not a.
This is exactly the way you want to look. If you were, if you were just, your debt was always staying up at 75% or higher, you'd be in a lot of danger, because we try to, you know, when we tell people what they should have, they're always asking us, what, what do you recommend, and you know, we see people that have a debt limit of, a self-imposed debt limit of 40%, and people that have a self, self-imposed limit of 75%. It kind of depends on where you are as far as what you're doing for projects and how you feel comfortable, but we really like to see that you leave that last 25% alone just in case you have an emergency that you might need to borrow for. But this falling percentage is, is exactly what you want to see.
75 is the legal limit, right?
No, you can go up to 5% of your, your debt limit or your equalized value, which we're saying that you leave 25% of that.
At least, yeah.
Yeah.
We're well below that.
At a minimum, yeah. Okay, so then I'd like to take you back to page one. Can you take me back to page one? And that's the executive summary page?
Okay.
Good. There's a, there's a section in there called term call feature, so on April 1st of every year from 2020 to 2029 is when you'll make principal payments. This actually has a call feature within it as well, so if in the year 2027, it makes financial sense to re, or prepay these, you'll be able to refund those and, and take advantage of savings without having to go all the way to the end of the maturity of the debt issue. Now, we always send out something each year, we're always analyzing your debt to make sure that there aren't, or that maybe are or aren't issues that could be refunded, so we're always keeping you apprised of whether there's an ability to take advantage of some savings. Unfortunately, as you know, with the interest rates going, you know, up or at least staying where they are, it hasn't been a really good market for refinancing, so, but we'll keep an eye on it for you every year, for sure.
We have refinanced here this last year or two, didn't we? I think we refinanced something within the last few years.
Yeah, I was going to say, last year you just did those, those smaller notes for the bank, two years ago might have been when it happened. Let's see, let's go to page two then, the top of the page, method of sale placement. This is going to go into the open market as a bid, a competitive bid. It's going to be open to underwriters and banks. Hopefully, we'll get a good mix from national, regional, maybe local. Once in a while, Bankers Bank will include the local bank, and if that, they happen to be the winning bid, we'll make sure that when we're here in a month, that we tell you that that happened, and we'll mention the local bank. But we give, we like to have as many bidders as possible because it gives you a chance to have them at that spray possible, so that's what we'll be doing with this in about a Let's see, on the next page, under risk factors, because the water and sewer user fees are being used to evade some of the debt payments, we need to at least let you know that because of general obligation, security is the general property tax, if for some reason your water and sewer utility was not capable of making its payments, the debt service fund would have to levy money to cover them, and I don't think that you have that issue with your water and sewer right now, but we just wanted to make sure that you know that that is a risk, that if there isn't enough funding in those funds, that you would have to levy tax for that portion. Other providers that are associated with this issue is your bond council, it's Corals and Brady. The paying agent is Bond Trust Services. And then on the next page is the calendar of events. I'm here tonight to show you the sale report and have you approve taking this to sale. We'll distribute the official statement the week of March 18th, and we'll be back here on March 25th for the, the sale of the notes and tell you how you did. And then about April 18th is when you can expect to see your funds, that you can start paying for the projects and equipment that, that you have in your listing. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I actually have one, some more for Bobby. Considering that this is happening, what about water sewer rates? Are they able to absorb this debt issue?
During budget time, we talked about doing rate case studies this year. We did put money in this year's budget to pay the.
So we're going to look at that.
So we were anticipating doing rate case studies this year to raise rates to pay for the county P plus the well.
And then the well for next year, so just kind of get a general idea.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions here? Any questions, anybody? Any motion? Any motion?
Just to be safe, why don't you approve by roll call?
Make a motion that we approve. Resolution 01-2, 019, for general obligation from the. Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second discussion. Are the hearing done? Roll call, vote.
Trustee Stantz.
Yes.
Trustee Pam Kowski.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yes.
Trustee Bush.
Yes.
Trustee Sorensen.
Yes.
Trustee Francois.
Yes.
President Ingram.
Motion passes. We're due discussion action regarding approval of the free development agreement with Albert C. Zander and Kerry A. Zander, Creek Crossing at St. Francis LLC, for land located north of the village across Plains along Highway E corridor. Dean Townes survey map is on you, and Michael is here.
Yeah, so, village has been in discussion in the last few months about the concept of this project coming to fruition. This is more or less just us asking you for pre-development agreements, which has a developer pay for services rendered from the village's standpoint in regards to putting together a USA amendment, working with CARPSE, the annexation process to be brought into the Ron Kloss is here, if you have any questions in regards to that project or where it's at, as he is at.
What is the intent?
The intention for that area would be more residential housing.
Ryan, would you?
Yeah, Mike, Mike is correct, it would be a mix of residential housing. The, the Zanders are working with St. Francis to gradually turn over the property, and the first part of it would be 32 and a half acres right here on the north end, and that would, we'd start out there with residential. They do have some land across on the east side of P, which would also be residential, sort of an extension of what's over there, and then the land around Homestead, just north of the church, would be most likely a mix of senior housing, a little more density in residential. Hasn't really been fully determined yet, but we'd like to get it all into the urban service area, and exit all to the village, and keep it moving forward.
Yes. Mike, I guess I'd like to give you a little bit of our plan, I want just all terms.
The, the proposed concept plan is consistent with our new comprehensive plan, which shows the village growing in this direction. This land is in our neighborhood residential land use category, which requires predominantly single-family development with a little mixture of duplex and multifamily and neighborhood business, and that's what we're seeing in the concept plan.
The, the CSM here is, the part is just, is north of High Point, right? But the major part of this development is on the other side of High Point, right?
Right, actually, what you're seeing here is a previous CSM that carved off lot one from the rest of the Zander farm, so it's a little deceiving on, on the, on the picture.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I don't have a, a better map with me, but that this particular lot is not even part of the land of discussion.
Why are we, I don't understand, why are we doing this then? What is happening at this?
That map is going to be something that you'll be looking at later on down the road with the conversation about bringing in Hillpoint Road into, into the village and exactly how much you might want to bring into the village when the annexation occurs. So it's all premature to be looking at that particular map at this point.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to point to the subject property on this wall down here, and it's, it's this area right here. So both sides of County P, just adjacent to and north of the village limits.
Okay, whereas this thing that's in here is, is further north.
Something different.
Now, there was something, we just approved a CSM here recently for a property that's off of, I can't think of the name of the road, the.
Bridgie Meyer.
Bridgie Meyer.
Yeah, and that particular one, I don't know what impact that might have, that was the place where they, they subdivided the lot with the understanding that that property would now be, could not be annexed, or is that?
That property is right here.
Okay, so that's, that's beyond anything that we'd be doing with this.
Just beyond.
Just beyond it, okay. Because it's not like they, they must have known something about this and decided they didn't want to be a part of the village or something.
Well, it was under completely different ownership.
Yeah, right, I understand that.
Yeah, he's, he's not coming into the village. It's okay with that. Anybody have a motion? Yes, please. I'd like to make a motion that we approve a pre-development agreement with the Zanders. Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion?
At this point, we don't necessarily have to know too much about what's happening, they just say that we want to go into a pre-development agreement, which would then say, as things progress, is we would end up annexing the property.
This is, yeah, you get started, so if they, whatever is done, we start collecting the money and stuff like that.
So this allows staff to work on this project?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand.
Funds from the development have been put in place already, so the, when staff is working on this, those funds are taken from the developers' money, not.
They've already put.
Not village.
They've already put money down.
It's part of the agreement. We have motion, second, any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Discussion action regarding preliminary plot for the Sundance subdivision.
Village has been in discussion, pre-annexation agreement with Sundance now for some time. Ron Kloss is here to discuss this, as the engineer for the project. Keel Badopoulos is here as well as the developer for this project. They did meet with the plan commission on Monday, February 4th, in which the plan commission gave conditional approval for this project, with a number of variances and waivers as well, of being part of that are being presented. Following some discussion tonight from you, we'll go through that same procedure and discuss those different variances that they're asking for. Prior to that, we'll have Don give a report and get you guys up to speed on the actual project itself.
So this is the preliminary plat that we would like to consider. We had presented a conceptual preliminary plat to the plan commission and village board this past fall, and it's substantially the same as what you're looking at, but since that time, we have worked with village staff quite a lot to resolve the details on the park configuration, the trail system, stormwater management, street cross-section, and de-construction, those kinds of details. We'll hold up the grade rest of it.
I love that sound.
So in a quick summary, we, we have a brewery road here, running up to the top of the hill, and then the plat itself is in this area with north being that way.
Makes it interesting.
We have an active park here, which the village is. Um, we have an active park here, which the village is identifying as a dog park. And then a, a large conservancy park on the hillside here, along with a top lot more in the middle of the project. And then there will be a trail connection along the western border. We have revised the outlots to include a dedicated outlot strip all along the west side to connect it to the existing Passage Trail Lines trail through this area, so that a trail can be extended to the conservancy park and not to the active park. This project is unique in that it's on a hilltop, so we have stormwater running off in all directions. But we have incorporated basins to capture that stormwater, um, at the head of each of the valleys. So I'll just quickly point out those locations, it would be one here, two, three, four, five, and six basins. To take your storm water management. Because this thing is on a hilltop, and I think we just talked about this last fall, the elevation does not allow the village to serve it with their current water system. So the village took this to CARP-C as a sewer subdivision with wells, private wells. They were fine with that, they adopted it, and I believe the, uh, village may even change their comprehensive plan to a well as well. But it is one of the variances we're asking for tonight. Along with that, um, we've been working with Jerry Gray on a street cross-section that's a little different than normal. We will have, uh, ditches behind the curb. The curbs will be a ribbon curb, no back to it, so the water can continuously flow into the roadside swale, along with a sidewalk on each side. I know that was, uh, a real point of discussion last fall, and we have incorporated sidewalks on both sides of the road. So that is another, uh, variation from the, the normal village ordinances. On, on the street grades themselves, Brewery Road, it gets very steep right through this section in front of the Stotts land. But because Brewery Road will be improved as part of this entire subdivision, we are letting the village know that this is currently at about fourteen and a half percent, very steep. But it's, uh, we don't see it being practical to rebuild it. So we, we'd like to improve it, but keep it at that same grade, so we don't have to tear that hillside apart, which would be another variance for the village to consider. And then coming off of Brewery and up Main Road into the subdivision, this gets to be, uh, twelve percent grade. And we, we'd like to go at twelve percent, this, because again, it minimizes disturbance to those hillsides. In that way, we can, uh, fit it in there as best we can and, and not tear this all up. So again, that would be, uh, something we'd like the village to consider. Um, what am I missing there, Mike? I think that's, that's probably the, uh, oh, and then on the deed restrictions, um, we have been tweaking those with Paul and Jerry to make sure there's language in there about the dog park, so that everyone knows it's going to be there. Uh, there's language in there about the private wells, they have to be owned and maintained by the homeowners. The village will not be solving those problems when they arise years down the road. So we'll make sure to get all the language to the village satisfaction. Mike is just scrolling through some of the stormwater, uh, engineering that we had submitted to Brian for his review. We've also submitted preliminary plant profiles to show the, the, uh, street grades, the sewer extensions.
Can you keep it on the one with north being north?
Sorry, this one?
No.
That's still, here we go, yeah, north is now this, so here's Brewery Road.
Yes.
And that does remind me, on the sewer main extensions, we're going to bring sewer main up Brewery Road, and we would like to cross some twenty percent slopes with that in order to be the most efficient with the sewer and minimize depth. So that would be another variance that we'd ask the village to consider. And primarily, that would be through, uh, this area right here, beginning sewer from Brewery Road up to this cul-de-sac and up to this other side. You may remember that Greg, Greg and Kathy Ressler own this piece in here. We are including that in the preliminary plat. And they are here tonight if you have any questions for them. They want to get it, they want to make sure it fits into the overall scheme here, they want to get it platted. But they live there now, they're living here, they're in no hurry to leave, so they do not intend to approve it for a long time. But at that way, at least it's, it's set, it's annexed and it's planned.
What's all being annexed now? Let's do annexing, let everybody know.
Right.
Go annexing.
What we, what we're planning to do is not only annex the plat itself, which again is, um, the Ladopolis land and Greg Ressler, but we would also include Linda Stotts's land and Scott Faust's land here to make this all contiguous with the village. We would also be including, uh, the full width of Brewery Road to get that into the village and improve to village standards.
Any questions for?
We had some talk about Stotts and the other, they were talking in and out, they're, they're now in, they're agreeable to be part of this. They've agreed to, I mean, that's part of it, right, that annex is part of the, the whole project, right?
Well, they, they haven't signed the annexation petition, but they were here at the Plan Commission meeting, and they understand what's going on, and they indicated that they are willing to bring it in.
I've talked to Linda too, she's definitely on board.
Bring it in?
Yeah, she's got it.
There's no proposed buildings in there, they're just coming in.
Okay.
Well, I just want to thank you, I think you do a very good job explaining everything. We've had some other engineers in here that all they do is complain about how much money they have to spend. So I appreciate what you're doing, how you're explaining it, very simple. Um, one concern I know that we had on one of the last board meetings was sidewalks on both sides. It appears that that's the way you've designed it, sidewalks on both sides. And then coming up Brewery, there'll be a sidewalk on one side.
Yeah, that's a good point. Uh, Brewery Road, as, as we've talked along, is, is, uh, a challenge. It is really, it's built on a hillside, so right now it's narrow and steep. We'll widen it out, so that's a, a better village street. But to minimize, again, to minimize the disturbance, we'd like to do a sidewalk just on the one side, which would be on the west side, adjacent to the subdivision. And in some of the area, right behind the curb. Where we can, we'll separate it from the curb so there's a terrace, but a lot of it will be right behind the curb, similar to what the village just did along, uh, P, right here in the village.
I just would like to hear from the people that we pay millions of dollars to, are there any concerns on your end? Why don't you go?
You think those people are going to make?
Mike gives millions.
Um, initially, um, I was going back fifteen years. I was worried about this site. Um, I've been on the property a dozen times. It's rolling, gently rolling up on top, and is well-suited to be the subdivision. And I think that, uh, Ron and, and Brian and Sherry working together have figured out the way to make the property accessible and connect it to the village with the least amount of disturbance to the steep slopes. Um, I'm very pleased that the village board, the Plan Commission, and the developer have come to the consensus of sidewalks on, on both sides. And, uh, the developer, in, uh, adjustments made over the last few months, has ensured that the western and northern perimeter of the site will be part of the village's planned perimeter trail network. And, uh, this takes in about fifteen percent of the total length of that trail network. And that's great to get that implemented all in one shot, so I'm very happy with the way the project is being prepared.
From, uh, uh, just a technical standpoint, uh, the drawings are also progressing along very well. Uh, Jerry and I have a handful of comments we just need to get worked out yet. But, um, yeah, the sanitary sewer layouts are actually better than I thought they would be, um, given the extreme geography there. And we would echo the, the same challenges of, of getting the type of roadway that the village wants, which is wide enough for driving and sidewalk on both sides, getting that into these tight areas. Uh, we've seen it on some other developments as well, where we try to balance, uh, nobody loves steep streets, but the village also has a longstanding hillside preservation set of standards. So trying to balance the minimal disturbance of land while allowing for some of these steeper grades to better fit the, the natural topography are, is a kind of trade-off that has to be made. So, um, yeah, we're, we're very comfortable with preliminary plat as presented, and we'll just work out the outstanding technical details as, you know, Ron and his group.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what is the final density of this? I know it's kind of moved over time, how many, how many residential lots?
Hmm, um, between the Sundance property and the Resslers, I think we are at a hundred and sixteen lots right now. At the Plan Commission, we talked about eliminating Lot 1 right here. There is, as you can see from the orange reddish color, there's a lot of steep slope. So there's, there's just, it would be a very small building envelope. Village staff felt it would be best suited to the conservancy park, we agreed. At the Plan Commission level, we talked about being able to replace that Lot 1 somewhere else within the subdivision. And because of the large lots and large frontages, we feel that can be done quite easily. So that's the number of that right now.
I have one other question, I think it's in Exhibit F or I. Um, could you clarify the, you came to the figure that each home would have point four children? That would be the effect on the school district?
It's, uh, it's a number taken from averages, I think, across the county for this type of housing. There may be, you might say, oh, there's one point two children per household with school age. Um, and, and I'm not even sure where that, where the number is used, um...
It's in one of, I think, maybe it's Exhibit I or, attached to I.
And, and is that the deed restriction, or is that, uh, is that what that's a village? Is that right from the village ordinance?
Yeah, it's part of the, in fact, so that's the, yeah.
It just doesn't seem realistic to me, so I'm curious as to how that number is.
So these will be expensive houses, and that, that number is the average school age, uh, child generation. And, uh, many of the buyers in, uh, for this project will be empty nesters or well on their way to being empty nesters with higher disposable incomes. And I do school impact studies, and that would be a, a typical number for three-car garage-sized homes, which I think will be the average, uh, within this neighborhood. So there might be college students, um, and, uh, and occasionally we'll have some elementary students, but that point six number would be what I was expecting to see in the impact study.
That's based on data from?
From the school district.
I have a question, you were talking about fifteen years ago, and you were thinking along those lines. And I was just curious if that's because in Exhibit B, where it talks about development on hilltops that allow shall be restricted, is that what you were speaking to?
Um, no, that's when I started working, uh, for the village, uh, on a regular basis. And I had done the Towne Berry, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, when their first comprehensive plan was done in the late nineteen nineties. And this lot was identified in the Towns' plan for possible village expansion. And I realized it was on top of the plateau rather than down in the valley, which would be really a first, uh, for the village. And so it was out of the ordinary, and, and that was something that, um, I felt really deserved more attention because it was unusual. And so I really came into this with kind of a skeptical frame of mind.
Right, because it disturbed, because it talks about preserving the viewshed, and when you start placing developments on top of hills, you start to disturb that. So with that being done, how did this project enlighten me, how it evolved and how you changed your mind and became more, or less skeptical towards?
Right, well, um, with the visits to the property and our setback requirement above steep slopes...
Does, does this development meet that requirement?
Yes.
The land being setback, so...
It, it meets that requirement, and the way that I would describe most of the property, it's almost a shallow dish up on top that tilts a little bit to the south. And houses are going to be set inside the rim of that dish. And if you were standing on the Plastic Ingenuity's property, um, outside the village limits, you might see over and see the tops of those houses, but from down in the valley, um, it's going to be pretty hard to spot. So, almost all of these houses. So this was an instance where this particular piece of property has a, a very large and, uh, not steep area um, at the top of the hill. It's more of a plateau than I would describe, you know, the top of a mound like Blue Mounds or, um, you know, other hills that we might think of. That plateau continues to the north, and this is the very southern edge of it. Um, and, and so in this instance, um, aside from Brewery Road and, and the road really that exists now, um, going up to the plateau, the farm road, um, this development can occur without disrupting those two slopes.
Um, what, repeat, if you could, please, Mike, what the ordinance is, it's twenty percent and how far back?
Um, I can't remember off the top of my head, and I think a hundred and fifty comes to mind, yeah.
And that doesn't show up on the plat?
No, but it does show up in the building pads that will be on the final plat.
That, okay, that was my final, my next question, right? Is it normal for us to, to approve this without seeing that final plat with the building pads on it?
Well, we would approve the preliminary plat, and then the engineering would get finalized, and then...
And then it would show that, that, not just the twenty percent slope, but the setback, a hundred fifty from the twenty percent?
Yeah.
So we'll have a second viewing to decide?
And we'll get a cross-section of the road at that turn角?
Well, let me, let me clarify this, under, under recent changes to Wisconsin plating law, if the final plat is in conformance with the preliminary plat, you have to approve it. The final plat merely divides the property into a final lot pattern and provides the final locations for the streets. The preliminary plat is what we use to make sure the environmental protection regulations are followed. The storm water management plan is, uh, adequate and meets all... The stormwater management plan is adequate and meets all our requirements to determine which park should be dedicated. That occurs during the final plat, but the map is all that now. So the preliminary plat is the, where all of the work takes place. When that's approved, then the applicant can come forward with the final plat, which actually is the instrument that divides the lots.
So then I guess we're making an assumption that the final plat will meet, the building pads of the final plat will meet the codes?
Yes, and they've been shown on different versions.
Right, but Johnny, this is what we're looking at today, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything that we've seen in terms of the building pads meets all of the requirements.
Okay, thank you.
And they have to meet it before they come at the final plat?
Right, and if we have, not only, not only do we have to approve it if the final plat is in conformance with the preliminary plat, we can deny it if it's not. And so the preliminary plat is looking very good in terms of ordinance compliance.
To complete that about the roads, the roads will be, it sounds like an interesting road design, but if you have two cars, car parks on either side of the road or each side of the road, will a car be able to drive through them, one or two? Jerry?
The road width will be the same as the whole felters subdivision.
Okay.
The only difference between the two is the whole felters has high-back curb on it, channelizes the water catch basins, which are concentrated points of discharge to the swales. This design is going to have what Ron refers to as ribbon curb. It will let the water flow continuously into the swale. We're opening perks up to stormwater management a little bit better than whole felters ones. But you can park a car on both sides and still get between it with an eleven-foot snowball.
So? Of course, it shouldn't be up there where there's a snowball. We have an ordinance for that.
So all of the roads inside of this subdivision are going to be twenty-eight feet wide? Is that correct? Aside from however wide Brewery's going to be, since we didn't have the engineering drawing, but that's probably, that's all, that's the width inside the, you're talking about the Meridian River? Those are twenty-eight feet wide roads, I believe?
I think that is the pavement width, and then we add the curb width on either side of that.
Okay, right.
Be thirty-two foot of drive at full service.
Okay, with the two feet of gutter. Right, so then you're doing this, and you're asking for seventy-four feet of right-of-way, not a standard sixty-six? What is that, might I ask?
In order to have room to put the swales in and the sidewalk on both sides. The right-of-way in the whole felters subdivision, which has essentially the same road design but with sidewalk on one side, is, I believe, if I remember right, is seventy-two foot out there.
That's right.
So we had to widen the right-of-way a little bit more to have room for that second sidewalk.
Whole felters being where?
Western edge of the village on Highway KP.
Oh, that's the new?
Skillsway.
Skillsway, okay. One that we just did that, okay, up there. Yeah, yeah, I know where it is, okay. So, okay, I was just curious, because you have that and however large the swales are and ten feet of sidewalk. So how far does the right-of-way then reach? I don't know, I guess, how much buffer is there from the sidewalk to where the right-of-way ends into the yard? Or is the sidewalk the edge of the right-of-way typically when you're with the swale and everything?
Typically, the sidewalk is one foot inside the right-of-way line. It will do the same thing here.
So how wide is the swale then?
Yeah, we're, generally, we want the swale to be a couple of feet deep to allow for culverts to each of them. So in general, they'll be about twelve feet wide.
On each side?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're getting, yeah.
Plus, we are going to add a shoulder beyond the ribbon curb so that if cars pull off the curb and park, they don't cause running. So that's adding a little bit of width to the distance between the curb and the sidewalk as well.
Between the curb and the swale, you mean?
Yeah, it'll be right behind the curb.
Because it's curb, shoulder, swale, sidewalk, right?
You got it.
Inside and out.
You got it.
Right, so the quick math, so that shoulder could be three feet if you're going to seven?
Well, it's, I think we?
Two or three feet or something.
Just a couple of feet, yeah. And we do intend to grow grass on that shoulder so that there's grass right up to the curb, but it'll have a solid base.
Right, so?
Yes. Tim, I know that in the past I've heard discussion about finding your ambulance, getting up there, one way to get in there. I would like to just officially have it on record. What are your feelings on that?
In the matter of perspective, we think it's doable. The second inference, we've talked about different ways if we need to, but we have a lot more spots we have to go to that are one-way in. We can do fine.
Thank you. That's on record, folks? Go ahead.
One of the things I noticed in here, and I, this is another, make sure I understand right. We do not have, we have wells up there, so we don't have fire hydrants. Now, if you have a fire, can the fire trucks bring enough water with them up there to do that?
Be no different than how they currently respond to a rural fire.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
So basically, that edge of that sidewalk could be, the inside edge toward the resident could be twenty feet almost from the edge of the curb. If you have a twelve-foot swale with three feet and a five-foot sidewalk, you're twenty feet from basically where the road surface ends on the curb. How far in the sidewalk's going to be in the resident?
Feel the nice and roomy.
One of the few places I'll have a place to put snow.
So then my question is typically from that edge of that sidewalk, how much yard is there to where the typical front of a house would be?
You're still going with twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
From the property line to the front end to the structure, footings to the structure will be twenty-five feet, which is the standard setback in any other subdivision. With the exception of the whole felters subdivision, which we reduced the setback to, if I remember right, twenty-two or twenty-three feet. Because otherwise, we had a problem with houses running into the bluff behind them. It's a standard village subdivision, aren't those houses twenty-five foot setback?
Just asking. Jerry, do you have anything else you want to add about this that, just from your opinion, what you think?
I think it's about time we get this damn thing built.
Okay, it's fine, thank you.
I do.
This is a question inside the covenants. It's actually dealing with solar panel, that solar panels are allowed in the covenants? It's under the section of the twenty-inch satellite and radio tower? Just curious as to why that was placed in there?
The covenants are a byproduct of, it's actually a combination of things that the developer wants to see in the subdivision, or probably more importantly, doesn't want to see in the subdivision, and then things that the village wants to put in there to give notice to the future landowners. So the satellite dish requirement is something that the developer inserted into the document, and that's why it's there right now, so that's his choice.
Mike, I didn't catch that. You're saying no solar panels?
That's basically what it's saying, is that solar panels, I believe, it's Section 11, satellite dishes, radio towers, plague pools.
Well, that's actually not what it says, though, because it, basically what it, the way that that paragraph is written is, is that the items that you are referring to there are not allowed without written approval of the Design Review Committee. That's basically the Architectural Control Committee of the subdivision itself. So, and then there's a further exception that unless the devices are placed within an interior space or screened from street view. So my guess, and Keel can speak for himself if he wishes, but my guess is that the developer doesn't want big ugly panels protruding seventy, eight feet off of the top of a roof that everybody's going to be able to see. But if they're done in a way that the Design Review Committee approves, it won't be a problem. Or if they're hidden from street view, it won't be a problem either. So it's just a couple of safeguards that are put in there to make sure that it's okay.
And to prevent them probably from plastering their front yard with them.
That would be correct also.
I was just curious.
These are very large lots for the most part, and with a couple of exceptions, they're, this was all cornfield where the houses are, so there's going to be lots of sunshine.
Yeah.
And not much shade.
There is.
Discussion, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make one, but I'm not quite sure. I don't get the variances here. So do you want a general motion to approve the plat, or do you want to go to all variances?
So I think the best thing to do first would be we go through variances to approve those one by one as we're on a roll call vote. And then final approval of Plan Commission's recommendations in regards to other changes that were discussed, or even things that you have that you actually have as part of your motion in regards to this development tonight, but your final, your final motion. So first? So the first one would be to approve the requested variance related to allowing sanitary sewer mains crossing twenty percent slopes.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second? Discussion. Roll call vote on all variances.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Trustee Sorensen?
Yes.
Trustee Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Pomkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
President Androni?
Yes.
Motion, period. Second one would be to approve the requested variance related to allowing individual private onsite wells rather than acquiring connection to the village's public water utility.
So moved. Motion, second?
Second.
Motion, second? Discussion. Are you done with roll call vote?
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Pomkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Sorensen?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
President Androni?
Yes.
Motion, period. Next one would be to approve the requested variance related to grades on Brewery Road being fourteen point five percent and Woodland Drive at twelve percent.
Do you have a motion? So moved. Do you have a motion, second? Second? Discussion.
Jerry can live with it. That's the big problem, right? Can you run the plow up and down there?
Yep, I can.
Okay.
In a bus. In a bus. Yes, I'd take the bus up there now.
Okay.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Trustee Sorensen?
Yes.
Trustee Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Pomkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
President Androni?
Yes.
Last one, did you approve the requested variance related to modified street cross-sections within the development for ribbon curb drainage dishes and seventy-four-foot right-of-way?
Do you have a motion? So moved. Motion, second? Second? Discussion.
Looks good to me. Our street with the, with the high curbs and the storm drains, the storm drains fill up and things just go bad, so it's probably going to be a big improvement.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Pomkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Sorensen?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
President Androni?
Yes.
That is the last variance.
Now you want to retract your plan?
Yeah, so the other approvals being part of that would be to remove Outlet One, I'm sorry, to remove Lot One and make that Outlet Seven, and decide on the zoning on that at a future date, which would be, Outlet Seven would be given back to the village for purposes of conservancy or public land park to be discussed later. Another one was to add vehicle access easements to all stormwater basins, which there were six total, to allow for long-term maintenance. The other was developer will obtain and submit to the village documentation that the Wisconsin DNR supports the use of dry detention basins on the preliminary plat. So what they proposed in regards to their basins, making sure that the DNR is okay with it. And they will also modify the proposed draft covenants per the instructions of village attorney. He has pretty much given, which you guys have received tonight, the draft of that. He has taken a look at that and made a lot of the changes that Plan Commission had asked for. And then just asking the developer to renumber and align the plats with changes acted on previously or acted on on February fourth. So the changing of Outlet One, the adding of another lot for themselves in regards to their housing. And bringing that, obviously, when the final plat comes to play.
And then we have something on the wells. Did we have to go into titles, block the wells? Take the response of all the other?
Oh, right, the covenants will contain, see if I can find it fast, in Section Sixty, I believe it is. Thank you. Some language that, as was discussed briefly before, about the, each lot is going to be served by a private well. And the covenants will contain some language for future landowners to see that says, no joint wells are going to be allowed, so it's one lot, one well, no combinations. And then there's language in there that the village board has determined, as you sit here today, that it's not economically feasible and not engineering possible. I don't know what the?
Very difficult.
For engineering is. So it's very difficult to actually get water up there. So if a private well fails in the future, the landowners that are up there are not going to be allowed to, well, the village board won't consider a application to bring water up to that development. So you're on private wells, and you're on private wells for the duration. Basically, the village is taking itself out of the mix as far as an option to provide service up there in the future. There will also be a couple of additional parts of Number Sixteen just to incorporate some DNR regulations and village ordinance language into that so to give further notice to the, to the landowners in the future.
I just wanted to be perfectly crystal clear that anybody buys anything up there that they understand, and they can come back and say, well, there's a loophole here. I really want it made clear, and the communication needs to be really well. Just like the fact that there's going to be a dog park out there supposedly. I want people to know, I want the communication to get installed.
We will do as best as we can.
I know.
Some people don't see clearly.
I realize that, even if you bang over the head with it.
Okay, maybe a motion. The?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Plan Commission's? Additional recommendations.
Oh, sorry.
I have a question. Anything from the Plan Commission members that are here? Did you have anything further to say about this? Or it's on paper right there, that's what it is?
It's on paper and what Paul just read there.
Okay.
Thanks.
But anyways, so, yeah, I think it was all covered, and the point you just brought up, so.
Perfect.
Thank you. I think we've covered it, over. So there, there was a second?
We had a motion.
Yeah, a second, sir.
And any further discussion? Are you done? We don't have to do a roll call for this, I don't think? All over the favor say aye. And opposed, the same? Motion carries.
One more. One more motion.
Paid motion to approve the...
Make a motion to approve the Plumary Platte?
Plumary Platte.
I'll second.
Motion approved, Plumary Platte, in second. Discussion. Are you done? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? No, the carries.
Thank you very much. I just want to add one more thing. It's great, we can't be talking about this. There are horse people, they have horses up there, so they're very willing to, the annex in, but they want to make sure they can keep their horses as long as they want. And we talked to Stan about that, and I think we feel there's a zoning that will allow that, Mike, or, anyway, I just want to make sure that's on the, on the table and everyone's aware.
Doesn't fit the declaration. Two?
Yeah, it's a good point. We have to pick them up out of the platte.
And the few little dogs that I love, so much.
Yeah, so that's why these lots are...
I'll have to do something.
So you think, like, how many dogs you could have?
Ten, probably. Three.
You're better guys. Yes, three.
That's already, that's already been taken.
We need to take care of it in the covenants. Well, we'll figure it out.
Thank you, bro.
Did you just approve the covenants though, Mike?
No changes by the attorney. It, it, they can never change.
Changed by the attorney.
Right. So these are all the preliminary.
The covenants will be looking at it as part of the final platte.
Correct.
We're still working on that.
Okay.
Discussion asked, we're hearing temporary credit limit treats police officer Benjamin Miller's credit card for one thousand to seven thousand for training purposes.
So you had approved the budget to send Mr. Miller to training, to train. This is just making sure that he has funds to be able to do so, so getting there. And this is only temporary, as soon as...
Excuse us, folks, can you step outside and try to read it?
As soon as the training is done, the card will be put back down to its normal level to a thousand.
Will be approved.
Second.
A motion to move in the second. As a second. Discussion.
This is just temporary. If you go out and do the original, sorry. Can you do second, Keith?
I do.
Are you done with discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Motion carries. Discussion by village attorney Paul Johnson, remembering ordinances pertaining to right-of-way and other possible ordinance changes and additions to be considered.
That's me.
That's your honor.
There are two ordinances, two proposed changes to your code of ordinances that I want to at least bring to your attention tonight to see if there's interest in going forward and actually preparing an ordinance. I don't want to do the work if you don't think this is an issue. The first one, which is probably the more significant of the two, the, there is becoming an issue about small cell wireless facilities, and they are becoming, they are trying, they are trying to be installed by communication providers in the downtown areas on right-of-way telephone poles, on stop signs, basically wherever they can find a pole. And basically, there is an ordinance that is, that has been prepared in response to the FCC's most recent ruling that basically says, well, you guys can put these wherever you want. And that runs counter to the municipality's ability to control its own right-of-way. So there's going to be tension between these two competing interests, very similar to the, to the fight that has been going on for the last several years with large-scale cell towers being placed within villages and, and cities. So the League of Municipalities has put together a model right-of-way ordinance to basically try to regulate the sighting of these small-scale cellular towers, I guess that's what I'm going to call them, within the village right-of-way. You're not going to be able to prohibit them, but you're going to be able to collect an application, you're going to be able to get your fees covered for people that are going to look at it, be it Mike, or be it me, or be it Jerry, or be it Ryan, whoever's going to be reviewing them, and you'll be able to have some, I guess I'll call it aesthetic control over where they, over where they're going to be sighted, as long as it's reasonable and as long as it's not contrary to, I guess, to the general welfare of the, of the community. So basically, it's a, it's an effort to maintain a little bit of control over your right-of-way, especially I look at the downtown with all the money that you just invested in Highway fourteen project and Highway P project as far as that goes, and trying to minimize the effect of having these small-scale cell towers attached to your light poles on the end of your street, like, or anything like that. So that's, that's it in a very broad nutshell.
So the ordinance is going to be, so we get control of everything, or not?
You at least have a reviewability, and you have some, you have some control, but I'll, I'll be honest, you don't have, you don't have, you're not going to have a lot of ability to say no, I don't think, but you do have the ability to, to kind of control where, as opposed to the ultimate question.
And no, no licensing, no income from citing these on, on village property?
No.
Can, can you describe what these look like? Are we talking about a twelve-inch antenna or a twelve-foot pole?
Yes.
That's a change, yeah.
You're, you're, you're talking about small, I mean, when I say small, they're small to be able to be placed on a light pole, or else basically on a, on a self-standing pole that's probably about fifteen feet high. And they're little boxes, and they, and I don't know exactly how little they are, I personally have not seen what we're talking about, but the, the idea is to cover, they're, they're trying to increase broadband capability is what they're doing, so, you know, they, you'd like to have one by your coffee shop, you'd like to have one by your restaurant, because that's where your big, your big uses are down, in the downtown area.
The ones we've seen are about window air conditioning and size. And they're on a, they literally bolt them to a regular pole that's already there. We haven't seen any, I haven't seen any self-sparing ones, but I'm sure they're coming, and they're getting smaller. Technology is better, but those are the ones we've seen.
So would this ordinance afford us?
Well, it gives you, it gives you the ability to at least know that they're coming. It gives you the ability to collect an application fee, not a revenue maker by any stretch of the imagination, because your, your fee is capped at what is reasonable to actually review the project and give it approval. So the, I believe the FCC said five hundred bucks is a reasonable application fee. It gives you the ability to get reimbursed for professional fees if there are any. I mean, some, some will be controversial and some not so much, perhaps, and it, but mostly it's, it's the, it's the ability to know that it's there.
But it won't give us any say in whether they're being placed.
Well, I, I believe that answer is minimal.
We have a, we have a similar thing at Ice Age National Seating Trail. FCC has a rule, you have to apply for, you have to send us, the Edson Show Alliance, National Park Service, a request, and you do get to, I mean, you do get to move them around a little bit. The one town here, we were able to shrink color lower by a few feet, twenty-five feet, not lighted, so since we have that Ice Age National Seating Trail, we'll have that later as well, but we have, they don't want to have it be controversial, that, it's not that the cell company, it's the contractors, the consultants they hire that you're really working with, and I feel like they'll, they'll work with you a little bit.
Do you think they probably have a good ordinance on this?
I do. I think it'll help.
I do think we need something. I mean, I'm just kind of amazed, you're telling me that they can come in and clench something on one of our light poles, and we can't say, we can't say no, and we have nothing to do with it? How's that work? That's what you're saying?
Right, well, that's, that's the, that's the, that's the battle between the Federal Communication Commission on a federal level and local municipalities' home rule of their own right-of-way. That's, that's exactly what the issue is.
Generally, I've seen them avoid traffic control devices, speed limit signs, your things that really need to be seen clearly, and for the most part, they've avoided decorative light poles or other decorative street furniture, not because they have to, but as a nod towards the investment communities may in those facilities.
So what we're looking for here is a motion to have our lawyer move on with this?
To draft an ordinance?
Draft. Develop an ordinance for it? Bring this?
It was just discussion by you.
Right.
We didn't ask for action, but mainly so you guys were, you understood that he was...
Right. If, if, if you're, if you're, if you're thinking it's necessary, then I'll start working on one, and I'll bring it to you for review. The, the, the good news with all of this is that, is that our firm put together a model ordinance, so I've got about three-quarters of it done already, which will save a fair amount of money. It needs to be tweaked to your personal desires, of course, but if it's something that you think is important for your downtown, while actually for the village as a whole, then I'll get started and bring it back at the next meeting.
Let's do it.
Best we, do the best we can, I've been just thinking about the fact that the Fire District collects a bunch of money from AT&T for that tower that's sitting over there behind there, and now they're talking about they can come in here and just hang stuff on, and we don't have, we don't, we don't get a nickel. It's kind of a bummer for the village.
Right, right, you're Congressman.
Was there another one?
Oh, yes. The, the other one is, is rather mundane and perhaps, and perhaps boring, but you have a record retention ordinance, and the Wisconsin Public Records Board maintains a book, and it's fifty-six pages long, of suggested limits on your retention of records, and it just got updated in 2018. You have a fairly standard, we keep everything for seven years except for a certain, a certain group of records that bounce all over the place, and the League of Municipalities is suggesting that everybody adopt an ordinance that basically adopts what the Wisconsin Public Records Board has put out. Some are seven, some are permanent, it's a whole variety of different lengths of time that records should be kept based on how important they are and, and, you know, if, just based on how important they are, basically. So the rec, the revision to your code would be to change one section in your existing code to basically adopt the Wisconsin Public Records Board book, and then you'd be in compliance with what the state wants you to do.
Sounds like something we should do too?
Sounds like a good thing to do, because you don't want to get in trouble because you don't have the back records.
Doing stuff for the language we talked about, that's all, is controlling landscaping and stuff.
No, that would, that should be something different.
You might as well work on that too, so tell them about that.
Okay, you're going to have to tell them about that one, Jerry, because my mind is, it needs to be refreshed.
As you know, we have right-of-way beyond the curb throughout the village and all village streets. A goodly percentage of the population assumes that that is theirs, so they put landscaping and plants and trees and...
Fences.
Whatever, in it. Then when we come along and do a project like we had last year, Highway P, where we need to use that right-of-way, causes quite a bit of an issue, because people feel that they need to be made whole, adds to the expense of projects, so I'd like to see Paul create an ordinance requiring anything be, anything except grass and a mailbox that's placed within village right-of-way be permitted, as in, they have to get a permit. It can be done multiple ways, it could be a one-time permit, it could be an annual renewal permit, whatever you guys would like to do, but we need to get control of that and get it out there that you can spend ten thousand dollars within the road right-of-way on your landscaping, but if we come through with a street project, we're going to put it back in the grass. The ten thousand dollars is at your risk, not village taxpayers'. And we had quite a few experiences with that last year.
I think there's another very good ordinance I should put in place.
Maybe we don't need an ordinance, maybe we can just mail everybody a postcard.
Nope. That won't do it. Unless you have a regulatory device to back up your postcard, you're missing it.
And all the rules apply the same, nobody gets an exception to it. An exception to one is applied to another, so I agree, let's do the ordinance.
That too.
I would say just, wow, you're going to look into it and bring it back.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I've found that it's always better to just put a draft together, have something to look at, because I can, I can sit here and talk all night, and it won't, it doesn't make a lot of sense to actually to read it, so.
Put the, put the ordinance together, just like the other one, and bring it back.
I will do that.
Jerry, where else do you run into that other than trail or road construction projects? Is this snow issue, snow, just storage and removal, or just on roads?
Not so much snow. We already have easements for access, we have problems with people finding things that inhibit our ability to use the easement, things like that.
Sightlines at corners too?
Sightlines at corners, including the Ice Age Trail corner, which will be one of the first ones to get noticed.
Good. Playing about that corner every day.
Okay, enough discussion, let's move on.
So you got your marching order?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
I need a motion to move in the closed session. So moved.
Second.
Motion, second.
But I'd like to take a final break before we do that.
A what break?
The bathroom break.
We can still, we can, we can vote on it to move it into closed session now, we can take a break real quick, and we don't need a, we need a roll call vote for that.
Yeah, just to go in here.
A roll call vote to go in.
So you got a roll call vote?
Trustee Stotts?
Yes.
Trustee Pamkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Sorensen?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Jerry, just thank you.
Okay, now, we'll take a couple. Now we're back in open session?
Make a motion to adjourn?
No.
No?
We got to take some actions. I need a motion to move ahead with the four candidates for the administration for the final viewing, which will be held on March sixteenth.
Right.
So...
Second.
We got a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same?
I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, adjourned, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
It's not a discussable motion.